Good evening. The agenda items I'd like to speak about are seven, nine, and 10. Item number seven, a motion to approve a resolution. I'm sure everyone has their packet in front of them. If you would look at the resolution on the last page of the resolution, you will see that the resolution has a place for signatures for the county council chair, county council vice chair, and Brittany Ward as the clerk of council, and the manager. Okay? If you look at the next item, which is number nine on the agenda, says a motion to adopt an ordinance, there's no place for the manager to sign an ordinance on any of the ordinances that have been done so far that council passes. And I'm curious to know, an ordinance is way more important than a resolution, but there's no place for a manager to sign an ordinance. But there's a place for the manager to sign a resolution. It's kind of a small little detail, but very important for the manager to date those resolutions and date those ordinances. So council knows that he actually saw those ordinances and resolutions before their five-day window for reconsideration. I would have hoped that our solicitor would have pointed it out. I think it's really important that we follow the charter. The charter is really important, and I know there's six of us here on council that don't care about that, because that was evident last voting session. But clearly, the ordinances should be followed.
Jim Boback.
Also, number 10, motion to adopt an ordinance number 2014-8, amending the Accountability, Conduct, and Ethics Code. Clearly a violation of the charter when it states, clearly in the code, that they are going to hire an attorney. It says in the code you're going to hire an attorney. It also says in the charter that we can't hire attorneys for commission, boards, and authorities. I don't know how you guys could twist that. I'm sure that the solicitor at this council will twist that any way we want it to be, but that's not how it's supposed to be. The way it's supposed to be is the council can't get an attorney of their own. Neither can any board authority or commission. Whether you want to call him an investigator or not, I don't think, if you want to call him an investigator, fine, call him an investigator. But don't put in the code that you're going to hire an attorney or a panel of attorneys, because that's clearly a violation of the charter. I mean, I don't understand what it takes to read simple language. It's a 73-page document. It doesn't take a lot. Also, I will go on to say that in the work session, you have ordinances in work session. Ordinances should be put on the voting session, not a work session. Clearly, the charter says that ordinance come in a voting session, not in a work session. There's nothing that the bylaws can change in that regard. And if you're not really certain about what the bylaws or what the charter says in section 210 of what an ordinance does, it says you get the four votes. That eliminates the element of surprise for the chair who's worried about surprises for this council. You've got to get four votes to get it to the table first. If you don't get your four votes, there is no surprise. You can't discuss it. You can't adopt it that day. You can't do any of it that day. All you do is get it on the table for amendment. So I don't understand why we waste four weeks of meetings for ordinances that should be put on a voting session right at the beginning, so you can get the four votes to get it on the table, so you can amend it to make it happen. Well, I know that takes probably legal advice and also somebody to read the charter. Unfortunately, we have had two years of people that can't do either. Thank you.
Mr. Griffith, I did request to have it on the voting session. Okay.
Anyone else?
Excuse me? Excuse me.
I'm sorry. Just ignore it.
Mitch, I'm sorry I got here a little late, but item four, additions or deletions. You voted on that? That was voted on? Additions are, from my understanding with the bylaws...
We didn't vote on additions. We just asked.
If somebody took, you decided. How did you decide if you didn't vote?
There was a motion to delete one item from the agenda.
Okay, and it was voted on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I believe the, I believe the bylaws says that if you're not here for the first vote, you don't attend. But I just sat down here.
It's not in the bylaws.
Pardon?
It's not in the bylaws.
Where is it at?
I don't know.
It was made up a long time ago that you had to notify before, when there was a vote, you had to be here before or announce that you'd be here before. That was there. I don't know. I heard it. Maybe Walter heard it. Some people hear it. But Boback announced after the first vote. Well, you do what you want to do, I guess. Thanks. Next.
Don't follow the charter, not follow the bylaws.
It's not in the bylaws.
Doesn't matter.
It's the old bylaws.
Oh, they're real bylaws, aren't they?
Public comments? Grabby?
Well, thank you for allowing me to public comment. I appreciate that. I'm here to address the council as, just to open an invitation to you. An important invitation. I'm, I'm working with Angel Giroux and as many leaders as I can find to put together what's called a civilian review board, which is an independent investigative agency for the police. The idea of it is not meant as to be any type of witch hunt regarding the police, rather it's meant to be an independent organization as a response to what's going on in Ferguson. Ferguson has had a lot of trouble. This would be an agency that would investigate complaints brought up against either the police, but it also can investigate policies, procedures, hiring practices, and the like. This type of investigative agency is an important part of many different cities across the nation. There's national organization that also offers advice and the like. The invitation is for you to come on November 19th at 7:00 PM. We're meeting at the Mission at Sherman Hills. And I've invited Kelvin Anderson, who is the executive director of the Police Advisory Board in Philadelphia, which is the civilian review board there. He has under him two investigators. This is, he will be able to offer insight in what we might be able to do to establish a civilian review board here. I think it's an important one, especially concerning if, if we only looked in the paper over the last few weeks with regards to what's going on in some of the counties regarding some of the police there, I think it's important for our community to have an independent agency looking at what's going on. Besides, if you look at the Bucksbury Police, which has one non-white officer out of 90, is that right? If anyone correct me if I'm wrong. Either way, the percentage is much different than the amount of non-white residents in the town, which is somewhere between 10 and 20 percent with the rising Hispanic community. Firstly, I think it's very important to have the council as a part of this process, because in the end, it's going to be coming back to you, I imagine, as to what, if this is something that's going to be established, it's an important part of the, can be a very important part of the government. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
You mentioned the meeting is November 19?
Wednesday, November 19, 7:00 PM.
At the Mission in Sherman Hills?
Sherman Hills, yes.
Where's the Mission at Sherman Hills?
Right before you're going up into it, it's that little building right there.
It's up Cold Street.
I don't know the names of these streets. I'm off of it.
As you go through Sherman Hills on Cold Street, you make a left where the stores are at, right there, and you see the chapel right there. It's around your wall. It's right there.
So a lot of questions hopefully will be able to be answered there, and it really is important to get the community behind this type of agenda. Thank you.
Enjoy. And I just want to backtrack again. And this came about when Rabbi Lerner came to me about two months ago, again, discussing Ferguson. Again, and one thing that stood out is that they didn't have this. Now, understand this, ladies and gentlemen, it's more than meets the eye. This is a civilian police report where they sit down and have a chance to talk things out, whether the police are not knowing, what training that they need, and goes with community. The two major cities that do this are two big cities that've been doing it for years. And what does it do? It gives the community more feeling that the police are in tune, they're working with us. But it also gives community leaders less time and opportunity to say the police are not working with us. If you look in our area where things going on, the police are an essential tool. But it's an essential tool if people in the community do not trust the police and do not know what goes on. Ladies and gentlemen, for the first time in 11 years, the debate is now being taken back in the House of Congress and Senate, okay, about racial profiling among police officers. So if it's now being brought up, we have to understand this is going on. We have to be ahead of the curve. We don't want people to be proactive after the event. Our community is going by leaps and bounds. This is a working tool that has worked. We have civilians and police working together and eyeing out the difficulties in our community before it hits the fan. And ladies and gentlemen, as you see, I can tell you right here, and listen to me, I've been at Sherman Hills more than anybody, so don't get the debate from me. We don't have the police up there in, in a more visible way, and the few guys that go up there, really, you can see in their eyes, it's really not that kind of, you know, have that connection, and there goes two ways. You know, many years when I brought to this area and this community about gangs, everything else, I always thought I was crazy, I was out of, but what I'm telling you right now, it's much needed that we have a working relationship with the police, and the people in this community have to see this, not to talk a good game, but walk a good game. And ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to see some of you guys up there too. You understand this. I go up there every day of the week. They don't expect me. Angel Giroux, Latino, he works with gangs. Yeah, that's him. When you go up there and the different faces they don't see, now they listen up and people who normally don't walk up there will maybe go up there. You know, the most difficult thing I have is people in this community going up there, and the first thing they tell me, "I'm not going up there, Sherman Hills. I don't have, you know, a suit of armor." And I tell them, "Really? I have kids up there, and I have nuns up there, and revans up there with no armor whatsoever." I need the leaders of this community to get out of your offices and your meeting rooms and go up there where the situation is. I need, they need your face up there, ladies and gentlemen. Again, they see me, they see the guys up there. When they see you, the people who voted you in, then think maybe Sherman Hills is an issue they need to be addressed. Again, I need your face, and I need you to be there, hopefully, November 19. Please be there. This is going to be a stepping stone in the future of this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Schramm.
Thank you. I was here to talk around chicken issue. In the Citizens Voice, on October 10th, 2014, there was an article that indicated that the zoning board had voted to ban chickens of various communities by a three-two vote, the reason being that their concern was for noise, pests, and disease, and fear of opening the barn door for sheep, pigs, goats, cows, and everything else. Another reason was lacking of manpower to enforce the law. Let's look at each of these items. First, noise. Laying hens are not loud and will occasionally clog. Roosters are loud, and they will crow, hence not having roosters and roosters will make sense. Actually, there is more noise from people on motorcycles and people in general. Chickens go to sleep at night, and you don't hear a peep. Pest. Any animal, animal that is not kept clean will attract various pests. If dogs, cats, humans don't keep things clean, mice, rats, et cetera, can become a problem. Spilled seed may attract some wild animals, no more than dog food, cat food, bird seed, or human food. Disease. Any animal that is not kept clean and cared for can cause disease and sickness. Fleas and ticks from dogs and cats, cat droppings in yards, rabies, and head lice in children. Fear of other animals being wanted. If people have room and wish to take care of them, then it is their property and their right to pursuit of happiness. Deal with these issues if they come up. Smell. Chickens don't smell if the coop is kept clean. Any animal not cleaned up after will smell. Dogs, cats, children, people. Reduction of property value. There is nothing to support this position that property values were reduced because of this allowance. Swimming pools have more of an effect on property values than a chicken coop. Property values may even increase if a sustainable food movement is accepted here. If you want chickens, you should move. This is a common comment. This was done over 400 years ago for religious beliefs. It shouldn't be the case now. Lack of manpower for enforcement. Madison, Wisconsin, has a zoning allowance for chickens. It is simple. If you are the homeowner of a single structure, you need a $10 yearly permit to have outside animals. If you are a renter, you need permission from the property owner and a yearly $10 permit. And if you live in a multiple-family building, you need permission from the owner of the building, all the people that live there, and the yearly $10 permit. The $10 permit is due every year in January, so less government is best. There can be a benefit to children. Children may get to see, know, and appreciate where eggs come from and what chickens really do.
Please not ask. You just sum up, because you have three minutes, your time is up.
Many forward-thinking communities across the country are opting for sustainable lifestyles. Our communities, counties, and states should join them. There are already laws and agencies to handle abuse and mistreatment of animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to expand upon Mr. Schramm's comments, and actually, I had some prepared comments this evening on the chicken issue, even though it's not on the agenda. Just wanted to say, let me preface by stating, section one of the Pennsylvania Constitution, inherit rights of mankind states, "All men are born equally free and independent and have certain inherent and defensible rights, among which are those of enjoying and defending life and liberty of acquiring, possessing, and protecting property and reputation and pursuing their own happiness." The case of the backyard chickens, we can use the arguments against the chickens such as, and some others might be repetitive. Chickens do not belong in the city as they are farm animals. Typically, hens are quiet, small, and need little space. All the municipal bodies comprising Luzerne County do not exactly fit the description of a concrete city in America. We live in an area where many wild animals roam free. My question is, how many, or how are a few domesticated birds owned by responsible families with adults going to negatively impact an area where we already drive into unmanaged deer, turkeys, squirrels, scouts, possums, rabbits, and even a few stray neighborhood cats and dogs? I'm sorry if I offended anybody by stating that. Chicken smell. Well, people smell too, and so does every animal confined or placed in crowded conditions with no access to free air and sunlight, and no ability to clean themselves or itself. Five hens generally generate less manure than one medium-sized dog. Unlike dog manure, chicken manure can be used for compost or fuel. If we want to over-regulate and restrict individuals, maybe we should pass an ordinance to require DNA testing of every pile of dog feces in a neighborhood and find every dog owing for not cleaning up their piles. Surely, there are more anonymous regent mounds of dog excrement lying around the chicken room. Hens are quiet. That's simply a fact. Chickens attract predators. Well, the same predators that go after chickens attack squirrels, rabbits, other birds, mice, rats, et cetera. We don't regulate people from having rabbits in cages. Guinea pigs, rats, hamsters, ferrets, in my opinion, ferrets actually smell worse than chickens. Skunks, big noisy birds such as parrots and cockatiels, other pets such as snakes and spiders are allowed. Not allowing backyard chickens, a bird that provides an organic food source to people, namely, our health-conscious neighbors, in my opinion, is a violation of the Pennsylvania Constitution, section one. As an elected official sworn to uphold the Constitution of Commonwealth PA, I believe it would be a constitutional violation to infringe on a person's inherent and indefensible right to not allow someone to acquire property, i.e., chickens, to pursue one's own happiness. Who am I to tell our responsible neighbors and constituents what they can or can't have on their lands, especially when it's not harming anyone else in their community? It reeks of our county becoming an anti-state and takes away their freedoms as tax-paying citizens of our county Commonwealth and freedoms of living in the United States of America. By doing so, we limit individuals' happiness to above a pet or pets, and/or limit their ability to pursue healthier and organic sources of food for their family. Surely, we spent many hours on an issue that seems insane, namely, for a single resident to keep and maintain chickens, because our zoning board did not grant in variance that could have resolved this issue long ago. Together, we as the county council should make the right decision and grant our taxpayers who fall under our zoning ordinance the ability to choose whether or not they want to engage in sensible and reasonable regulated ownership of backyard chickens. By not passing a reasonably sensible and sound chicken ordinance, I do not believe this issue will go away, as the next step in the process could be a lawsuit defending the very essence of this county council's decision to infringe on someone's rights of acquiring, possessing, and protecting property and reputation and pursuing their own happiness. I do not believe we need to waste any more time or money on this issue, and I believe it's our job as county council members to lift outdated and anti-creative restrictions on backyard chickens and the many other issues that plague and constrain us as being an attractive place to live in peace and harmony in our own homes within Luzerne County. We want to welcome people here, not take away the quality of life people could enjoy elsewhere. Simply telling someone to move is not the answer to solving this issue. I ask and urge my fellow council members to support reasonable ordinance to backyard chickens. This is not an issue that requires a complete no ownership restriction that fines and financially hurts people over a species of bird they wish to keep and maintain for whatever reason they see fit. This issue may be laughable to many, however, brings the question of our sense of legislative judgment and whether or not we as council members can truly find compromise among each other and the people we were elected to represent. If we, on the other side, if we intend on asking for another 4% in real estate taxation, this makes us very unattractive as a county by taking away one's personal freedom through financial constraints. And I ask, what personal freedoms are we as council members truly giving back to the people who elected us when we financially constrain them by disallowing them to simply have pet chickens that I believe have very little monetary value when it comes to county finances? So in conclusion, and to repeat, I ask my fellow county council members to think about this wisely. The predator county is asking us to prey upon the people, to take another 4% of financial freedom from our taxpayers. What is this council willing to give back in personal freedoms for that 4%?
Say amen. And it's here, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
The motion for you is a, another packet for properties. This one was filled out by Mr. Donald Miller and Kelly Miller, beginning the process that council established for the purchasing of county properties. This one is for $9,900 for a vacant lot in Dupont, Pennsylvania. The tax assessment office has reviewed it, found the property to be vacant, and the current assessed value is $23,400. I added into the packet today, to this board, a map of the actual location.
And we need to move on to this?
Nothing. It's just a work session. Yep. If there's any discussions, if you have any questions? If not, then it'll be voted on for advertisement the next meeting.
Here are no questions or comments on item four withdrawn. Item five, ordinance who may administer the code. I believe on this one, if I may, you need to have four votes to still have floor, is that right?
No, this is just the work session. This will just be a discussion on this one. And then after this, the voting session, we need the four votes of the voting session. So it'll automatically be on the next voting session.
All right. Thank you. Well, Mr. Reminski, do you want me to read the ordinance? It is lengthy.
If it was passed and operated, it would not counsel.
The purpose, you know, I have a copy of the reasons the Home Rule Charter commissioned the public to vote for home rule. And I highlighted a line that said, "County government and state of county affairs can often be opaque to the average citizen. The recommended charter provides a number of mechanisms to make county government more accessible." And one of the reasons they, they used to get the Home Rule Charter vote was a requirement that the county budgets provide comparative figures for each item from at least the current and prior fiscal years. So this ordinance reemphasizes that, that the budgets for each year shall be adopted by county councils set forth in the county Home Rule Charter, and shall include an employee position budget that lists employee positions defined by the manager for at least the past two years, as well as the current proposed year, which are necessary for county operations along with defined compensation for each proposed employee position, with comparison from employee position compensations for the current year, proposed year, as well as the previous two years. I think I, some information was given out that we have a person who also found a lot of errors in the position budget. I'm trying to protect the funds that are set aside for positions. The employee position budget, so defined, shall be legislatively authorized positions for the fiscal year, covered by the adopted budgets, and all required funds for these positions, including payroll taxes and authorized employee benefits, shall be determined as encumbered funds, and shall be allocated in the adopted budgets. I think we need to protect the position budget. One thing I would like, I did take Mr. Griffith's comments about the ordinances and having a signature line for the county manager on our ordinances should be reinstated by the clerk when she prepares them. Do you want to have discussion?
Anyone for discussion?
If I may ask, Ms. Dobash, how does, how is this different than what Mrs. Howe proposed and this council voted on several months ago, actually? Be discreet of that.
Well, I think we're trying to protect our manager from passing on salary raises and protecting the funds not to be borrowed. Where do you see that it's the same?
Well, to respect, I think we discussed this a few months ago.
Can't hear you, Harry.
We discussed this, then why did the majority of council vote to let go the whole idea of having zeros in the budget that was presented for, for this current year and the previous year? That's my question back at you, Mr. Hawes.
Just very briefly.
I think there was a slight variation.
Then I guess, I guess you'll vote on it.
There is what appears to be a slight variation. Perhaps I'd ask for a solicitor judgment, obviously tonight, but perhaps something you can't look into. But this does appear very much a part and parcel of it, is how provided, except for in the now therefore being revolved, resolved part, where in fact, it says that these shall be determined as encumbered, quote-unquote, encumbered funds and shall be allocated. I think with the word encumbered, which I've perhaps clarified this.
Well, what I was trying, we're protecting the funds.
No, and I understand what you mean by that, but I, what I want to do is take what you said and ask a question on it. By saying so, by doing that, when we mean encumbered funds, do we mean that if, to be clear, if the manager wants to then change the position funding, create a new position?
This would stop him from...
That's what I thought this was, which is the difference between Mrs. Howe's motion of last year, which was passed, and the one currently. To the solicitor, I'd only ask if under the charter that is allowable, not today, for judgment or perhaps something reviewed before we go forward on this any further, and I appreciate your work on this. Thank you.
May I, Mr. Jerr? I would say also that this language is different from Ms. Howe's with regard to the, to the two years. This, this language adds a two-year comparison as opposed to Ms. Howe's ordinance, excuse me, Mrs. Ms. Howe's ordinance that did not have that time requirement. Those are, those are two major changes that I saw. Two-year look back and obviously the language about the income.
Isn't that language covered in the charter? For... For the history.
The history? For the budgets?
Right. Which the position budget is one of them.
I understand what you're saying.
Isn't the two-year requirement covered in the charter?
Oh, from one of the budgets I'm checking.
There's lots of things in the charter. We seem to ignore it.
Yeah, I'll be happy to read it, but I think you're correct. That would be, that would be the, the charter does specifically say for the budgets, have that two-year look back period. This specifically, this makes it specific that it would be needed to have.
It's a shame that we, we have to go over this and put in these types of details, but my biggest disappointment is the majority of this council voted to ignore the way the budget was turned in and accepted it, and still to date does not even consider consequences for not following the charter. Thank you, Mr. Petry.
Can you make a comment? Public comment? Anyone? Mr. Griffith.
For Mr. Hawes, if you can read the ordinance, the difference between be above and be below is startling, just so you know. I mean, that's the difference between what Ms. Howe wrote in hers and what Ms. Dobash presented in hers. It clearly states what the one ordinance was and is currently, and what the change should be.
Any other comment? Public comment? Anyone? Mr. President?
For Mr. Hawes, who can't read the ordinance, the difference between the above and the below is startling. Just so you know, I mean, that's the difference between what Miss Howe wrote in hers and what Miss Dobash presented in hers. It clearly states what the one ordinance was and is currently, and what the change should be, so I don't understand what the difference, what the question is, but, I mean, it's pretty obvious what the difference is. I mean, it's right there in the ordinance, so I don't understand that. I wish we would put as much effort into following the charter as we do worrying about chickens in this county. Mr. Urban spent probably a good five minutes or better. I wish council would get three minutes' time to speak, which should get us out of here a whole lot quicker. Five minutes to talk about a chicken ordinance, which I'm not saying is not important, but I think following the charter is way more important. And I don't hear much discussion about that when six people just voted, not even 10 minutes ago, to violate it one more time. Violated it last week, now you're going to violate it again this week, and then we're worried about whether we're going to follow the bylaws? We can't follow the charter. Let's not worry about following the bylaws if you can't follow the charter. And it just boggles my mind when we don't have anybody on the legal side to tell you, people, you're violating the charter. It's clear. It's clear you were violating the charter last week. In his opinion, right here at the council, you violated the charter, but you voted for it anyway. Majority vote. Incredible. Budget transfers. Why is it that we can't get the council chair to sign a budget transfer and the controller to sign a budget transfer as the charter says? It says that budget transfers are approved like six days later when the manager does one. I would think that that signature and a date would be really handy on a budget transfer. I don't know if you guys have looked at any of the budget transfers. I know Harry brought up the issue about budget transfers during the budget process. There's no date on those budget transfers, except where the manager might sign one and put a date there. Budget transfers should have a date on it for when that transfer was made. I know it's really difficult, it's a difficult concept, but when the budget transfer is made, council needs to be told six days after. That's what the charter says, and so should the controller. We have no record at all that the controller got a copy of that transfer. None. And that was an issue when I was the controller that I raised, was when there was a budget transfer, we were never notified. And then when we finally got notified, it was, well, it's on the web. That's wonderful. So is the public notified, but the public doesn't have the ability to stop the budget transfer. Council does. So, why doesn't council get a budget transfer signed off by the chair? No ideas. That's a charter violation. Been since two years now. I don't understand. Yeah, the explanation's really clear. We took money from salaries and we put it here. Another reason why the ordinance is important is so you can't take money from salaries and put management consulting without council's approval. We're paying a guy $4,300 a month to do our healthcare benefit program. It has a six-month contract that's past expired. Still working here, still getting $4,300 a month. How's our courtification going, by the way? That's only expired by a year and a half. Courtification for council, should we file a mandamus against council to get them to follow the charter too? It's just startling how nobody here on council can figure this out. But we can sure worry about the chicken ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm quite amazed. We're worried about whether an ordinance that's being proposed will violate the charter or not because we're locking funds that are approved for positions and salaries to try and get a better handle on the expenses in this county. I mean, it's not like we're half a billion dollars in debt or anything. Oh, wait a minute, we are. I'm sorry. That's all right. So we're trying to propose something, some of one of the council members is, to lock this in, so the manager can't create positions in the coming year, can't give raises, without coming back to council for that approval. Everyone's worried about, does it violate the charter? Well, tonight, a third property came up for purchase, but the whole procedure violates the charter. And it's a procedure that you all voted on by emotion, but it violates the charter in many ways, but here we are going for a third person, and it's the most horrendous procedure I've ever seen in my life. I wouldn't be caught dead even participating in it. But yeah, you think it's a wonderful procedure to try and sell off county property. The budget process itself this year, yet again, for the third time, violated the charter. A motion was brought forward on that, but no, we voted against that. People in this county have worried for years about the Democrats and the Republicans. Well, this body of people has created a whole new political party, the Lawtons and the Anti-Lawtons. And that's what everyone in the county is laughing about. It's not the Democrats, it's not the Republicans, it's the Lawton Anti-Lawtons, and they're all right here. You're turning our county into a joke. You're disrespectful to one another. Can't you get it together? You're supposed to be the leaders. You're the elected here. You can't get it together? Come on, guys. Grow up. Thank you.
Jesus. You morons. Never seen anything like it in my life. Chilling.
Paper place unknown. This is open to discuss on any topic? Okay. They're in the paper where the county is looking for almost a million dollars for refunds on back taxes. I thought on the appeals, the tax move, the appeals were on establishing a new value for the upcoming year. Why are refunds being made in the past, or are these cases that have languished somewhere on somebody's desk? And people in the assessment panel, assessment board, whatever, don't know what to do with them? Then I suggest that you call Tony Lou in here, put his feet to the fire, find out what's going on, is he running the assessment department properly? And if not, ask him for a designation. Get someone that knows about assessment and how to run the assessment department and what's going on. Because, you know, if he's playing footsie with people, you know, get rid of them then. Because this is ridiculous. If these cases have languished on somebody's desk for two or three years, county doesn't have money to make the refunds unless you work something out on forward taxes, like they had about the Walden-Hazelton being reduced to $16 million. Now, Walden's worth almost twice that amount of money. And I use the example of a motel here in Wolfstar, and I inspected. The unpaid balance line there two years ago was $8 million. They reduced the value on it to about $7.5 million. This is ridiculous. Reductions are given on commercial properties that are far, their value far exceeds what their assessments are being done on. Thank you.
Any other comment?
It's not just commercial. Give an example of what this community has intention, the property that the person paid separate lots over a million dollars for. How much tax do we collect on it now? $50 a year in total. And Tony Lou said, well, if it's not what he paid for, it's what it's used for. The person is incarcerated right now. Miracle. And he paid over a million dollars for this, and it's assessed totally, the value is $50. Check into that. So it's not just that, there's a lot of sweetheart deals out there. And what do you, how many communities do we have in Luzerne County? Can I ask that to the supervisor or the manager? I believe we have 23 that are covered by our zoning. 23 are covered? How many are in total? 76. 76. Well, I guess there's a lot of communities out there are going to be very nervous because they're going to sue because they violated the Constitution. They have ordinances concerning chickens, but now they're going to get sued according to our councilperson here. Their violation. You're going to get sued. They're shaking their boots now because they have ordinances in their zoning that protects this. Where are we going? Thank you, next. Nothing happens whenever you talk to this group this August. Thank you, next.
Anyone else?
My two favorite repetitive, boring subjects. Has anybody heard of what's going on with the audit? I don't know why the heck that's so damn funny. I didn't really mean it to be funny. Should I have?
No, it's serious, but it turns to be funny.
So, does anybody, have anybody heard anything written on a little piece of paper being held in the beak of a dove? You know, the whole Home Rule structure patterns itself after corporate governance. And if you look at corporation structure, and make a parallel between this council and the Board of Directors of Corporation. Guess who the controller or the audit department reports to? You folks. So, there are some, is this early on? Well, I'll have to see this till next weekend. There are some statutory audit requirements that the auditor must fulfill. That is, the internal auditor. It's been 10 months since we've seen him. We're almost at the end of the year. I would really like to know if any of that stuff's been, not done. How about started? You know, how much are we, are we going to be in trouble with Harrisburg? Or are we already in trouble with Harrisburg? And remember the schedule that was presented? Well, most of it was the stuff that was done by the previous controller, but there was a little inkling of some activities that were supposed to be done. We didn't hear anything. As regards to the budget, you know, I'm still waiting for those definitions and headings and all that, it's good stuff, but I guess we'll see that in next year's budget, not this one. So, I don't know what to do about 503A, B, and C, but they certainly haven't been followed. But it's everybody else's head tonight. What's the charter? Nobody cares. Thank you.
Next. Anyone else? You have a problem?